On April 28, 2016, the Lenden Public School Board of Education issued Starlight Local Store and Thursday House by State Water and Social and Public Safety. In addition to listed items, we have submitted a Core Meditation Express Act on Monday, not specifically referred to in joining this event, affecting the schedule of the evening under Sunshine.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
This is Diana.
Here shortly.
This is Burke.
Here.
This is Slater.
I'll be here shortly.
Mr. Walrath?
Here.
Mr. Colvis?
Here.
Mr. Tapalas?
Here.
Mr. Kwaney?
Yes.
Yes.
So welcome to the workroom. Thank you.
Approval of minutes of the work session held on September 26, 2016, and the regular meeting held September 27, 2016.
Salute.
May I get a second?
Thank you.
Roll call. Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Um, we're going to start the public agenda items only. Superintendent, report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to speak loud so everyone can hear me. We have some very special guests here in the audience tonight. Several students from King University are here visiting. These students were all at one place on the right there, are in the Graduate School of Education, specifically the Department of Educational Leadership, and they are studying to be future educational leaders. So we're headed to find out whether they live in Board of Education meeting. They've come to see this exciting meeting tonight. But more importantly, at the end of the meeting, they're going to have some questions for our board members, possibly for our world attorney or assistant superintendent DA. As future educational leaders, they need to understand all aspects of educational system. So welcome to the students from King, and we hope you have a wonderful experience. Madam President, I'd also like to give our update our daily report tonight. In September, we had eight incidents reported. Two of those were validated as being true harassment intimidation or bullying incidents. Three were not, and three were undetermined. The actions taken for the offenders include counseling, in-school suspension, increased supervision, and laws and resets, and the victims in all instances are accounted for. In recognition of fire prevention, I'd like to recognize the City of Linden's Fire Department, who have been in most of our elementary schools as long as educating students what to do with a fire, how to prevent a fire. We thank the Fire Department for having a powerful relationship with the school, with our students, and for always working to keep our district and our city safe. I'd also like to remind our parents about the 65th Annual Linden Holiday Parade, which will take place on October 30. As always, the Linden High School marching band will be performing, along with other marching bands, folks, the Linden High School Dance Company will be performing, and hopefully Santa Claus will be coming out once again. Also like to recognize the Linden Dance Company. Next Tuesday, they will be performing at the New Jersey School Boards Convention, right after or right before the Commissioner of Education is speaking. Our dance company performs at various schools throughout the district, performs at all kinds of special events, and they're just awesome to see. If you have not seen them, you can check them out at the Holiday Parade. And finally, the best part of my job is being able to recognize students. So tonight, we have two of our elementary students who are here to be recognized, along with their former teacher, Mrs. Higgins. With us tonight are Amari Grissette and Molly McDonald, who were the winners of the New Jersey Department of Education, excuse me, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection post their contest. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Higgins up to the podium, so that she can tell us a little bit about her students and their accomplishments.
[Inaudible]
In the spring of 2016, Dr. Robertozi has led all students in grades three through five take part in the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's annual poetry contest. Children were asked to write a poem explaining what recycling means to them and how they are able to use items in their life to better the environment. As a class, we brainstormed research to examine what it means to recycle, reuse, and reuse an object. Each student then wrote a poem using no more than 100 words explaining what recycling means to them for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's annual poetry contest. After a long-awaited announcement, two weeks ago, I received an email stating that two of my students have been chosen out of 4,000 entries from around the state of New Jersey.
Say that one more time.
Stating that two of my students have been chosen out of 4,000 entries from around the state of New Jersey as the 2016...
[Laughter]
Poetry contest winner. These two students were so... Oh, I was going to say again.
Two students out of 4,000 entries.
As the top poetry winners for the fourth grade category, Molly McDonald and Amari Grissette are invited to attend the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's annual conference and luncheon tomorrow at the Jumping Oak Country Club in Neptune. They will be honored with a luncheon children's theater show and will receive an award made for recycled materials.
Just thinking you can read that. Thank you, Mrs. Higgins. I know that tonight is probably not the highlight of these young children's lives. Tomorrow will be even better because they're going to feed you, and there's a nice show. But we'd love to recognize Molly McDonald and Amari Grissette. Would you please come up and introduce them? [Applause] Molly's going to read us her call.
I am green. Hear me roar. Do not put any litter on the floor. You can reduce the garbage around by recycling what you find on the ground. Bottles, cans, and magazines too can be reused if you know what to do. If you use these three unique arts, Mother Earth will be a shining star. Planting flowers, vegetables, and fruits everywhere will help us to have nice fresh air. If everyone does their fair share, then our wonderful Earth will know we care.
Okay, I'll go to Mrs. Hiddins and the students, and then we're going to invite them to families. [Inaudible] Wait, Santa Claus come up, please, for a minute. [Applause] As the President beckons, concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Robertozi. Now we'll go through the standing... Oh, turn to... The standing, ladies, curriculum instruction. Mr. Walrath?
There are 26 items under curriculum instruction for approval. Items one through eight deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payments for related services as per child study team evaluations, the approval of one-to-one parent professionals, the approval of transportation, and the approval of bilingual evaluators for related services. Item nine approves home instruction services provided by outside agencies. Item 10 approves the team sports schedules for the winter 2016-2017 season. Item 11 amends board action on past CNI reports. Items 12 and 13 grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item 14 approves district field trips. Items 15, 16, and 17 approve training for district staff. Item 18 approves professional development activities. Item 19 approves the 2016-2017 annual tuition for student attending programs at the Union County Locational Technical School. Item 20 grant permission for student groups to participate in the City Hall tree lighting ceremony. Item 21 accepts the superintendent's report on all acts of violence and vandalism in the Linden Public Schools for the 2015-2016 school year. Item 22 approves the submission of the NJACQSTAT statement of assurance and the district performance review for the 2016-2017 school year. Item 23 grants approval to submit the NCLB Title I comparability report. Item 24 approves the cost of refreshments for district Title I parent ratings. Item 25 proclaims the week of November 14 through the 18th as American Education Week to be celebrated in the Linden Public Schools. Item 26 approves the superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as discussed at the September 27, 2016 regular meeting. Madam President, I move curriculum instruction items one through 26 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Colvis?
Yes, Madam Secretary. President, there are 28 items under management operations for approval. Item one amends board action on past management operations reports. Items two and three and seven are the transfer of staff. Item four is the appointment of staff. Item five approves leave of absences. Item six compensates staff for unused vacation days and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Item eight approves staff for management and distribution of fashion library materials. Items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 21, 23, 24, and 25 are the appointment of staff. Item 15 approves staff to facilitate pre-k and kindergarten open house parent nights. Item 20 appoints voluntary coaches for the winter season. Item 22 authorizes a teacher at McManus School, Middle School, to teach an extra period at the per diem hourly rates. Item 26 appoints volunteer instructor for the after-school aftercare program. Item 27 appoint substitutes. Item 28 accepts the retirement of a staff member. I do, thank you, Mr. Colvis. I've known Joanne Sura for many years. I had the opportunity to teach her her son Matthew when he was in high school, and Joanne... I was actually very surprised that nobody else was, but I'm usually blessed enough that she's retired. She's worked for the Linden Board of Education for 25 years. She started in 1992 as secretary of the Business Department, and she's retiring. So I want to wish Joanne all the best in her retirement. She will be sorely missed. I read that. Thank you. Madam President, I move Matt to the operation items one through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Yes, Madam Secretary. President, there are 28 items under management operations for approval. Item one amends board action on past management operations reports. Items two and three and seven are the transfer of staff. Item four is the appointment of staff. Item five approves leave of absences. Item six compensates staff for unused vacation days and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Item eight approves staff for management and distribution of fashion library materials. Items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 21, 23, 24, and 25 are the appointment of staff. Item 15 approves staff to facilitate pre-k and kindergarten open house parent nights. Item 20 appoints voluntary coaches for the winter season. Item 22 authorizes a teacher at McManus School, Middle School, to teach an extra period at the per diem hourly rates. Item 26 appoints volunteer instructor for the after-school aftercare program. Item 27 appoint substitutes. Item 28 accepts the retirement of a staff member.
I do, thank you, Mr. Colvis. I've known Joanne Sura for many years. I had the opportunity to teach her her son Matthew when he was in high school, and Joanne... I was actually very surprised that nobody else was, but I'm usually blessed enough that she's retired. She's worked for the Linden Board of Education for 25 years. She started in 1992 as secretary of the Business Department, and she's retiring. So I want to wish Joanne all the best in her retirement. She will be sorely missed. I read that. Thank you. Madam President, I move Matt to the operation items one through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Thank you, Madam President. So, the Support Operations Committee on recommendation of the Superintendent's Schools and Business Administrator Board Secretary prevented following 17 finance motions and nine facilities motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items one through six are regular board business dealing with the acceptance of the Business Administrator, Board Secretary certification as of September 30, 2016. No major account or fund has been over-spended. Board Secretary's report for the month of September, authorizations for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for October 2016, to draw warrants in the amount specified in favor of person's name, and a list of transfers and adjustments for the month of September 2016. Item seven, judge's report for the month of September. Item eight is to amend actions on past agenda from August. Item nine. Item nine is to accept funds in the amount of $5,000 from 1066 Bayway Employee Good Neighbor Fund for the purchase of education materials and supplies for oral elementary schools and Soul McManus Middle Schools. Item 10 is to accept funds in the amount of $2,342.50 from the New Jersey School Insurance Group, Mount Laurel, in connection with schooldude.com, Inc., Pittsburgh, PA, representing a 50% reimbursement of our 2016-17 school due renewal for achieving a school due rating of two or above. Item 11, we're dues. Item 11 is to approve a contract with Dickerson Corporation, based sure, for electrostatic paint and locker repair for School 10 in the amount of $17,400 based on what we see on September 14, and to accept a donation from School 10 PTA in the amount of $8,000 for the project. Item 12, Linden High School Team authorizes Linden High School Swim Team to utilize the swimming pool and other appropriate facilities from November 14 through February 3, 2017, Monday through Friday, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at a contract rate of $4,580. I believe that's with the Rowway YMCA. Item 13 is to approve a contract with Appraisal Associates, Inc. in Cranford, in the amount not to exceed $3,000 for appraising the value of property located at 220 through 228 Alma Street, Linden, New Jersey, for the purpose of constructing a parking lot for Soul Middle School. Item 14 is to approve the enrollment of a fall student for the 2017-2018 school year eligible on a tuition basis under policy 5118. Item 15, in accordance with NJAC 6A:26A-3.2, to approve the following resolution for submission of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and Annual Maintenance Budget Amounts worksheet M1. Item 16 is to approve the resolution that the Linden Board of Education does not require charges for meals. Linden Board of Education resolves that it does not require YCS, PSSD to charge students for reducing and/or paid meals. This resolution shall take effect immediately. All prior resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such inconsistency. Item 17 is to declare the following as surplus equipment obsolete or unusable to be disposed of in accordance with district policy 360. The facilities report, item one is to amend the action of past support operations facilities from August of item one and from September, item three. Item 2 through 9 authorizes use of facilities in those charges requested by S. Simon's Benefits Coordinator, Confidential Secretary, and the Business Office. Pete Franklin, Principal of McManus Middle School. Olivia Slater, Director of Strategic Initiatives and Program Services, Someone's Daughter, Inc. Dee Figaro, Troop Leader, Brown and Troop 42010. Dawn Bemian, the High School Band Parents Association. E. Kushner, Sports Supervisor, City of Linden Department of Public Property and Community Services. Rita Greco, Linden Cultural Heritage Committee, and the Mississippi Division Players, W. Adams, Muncie District Executive Boy Scouts of America. Madam President, if there are no questions or further discussion, I move items 1 through 17 of the finance agenda and 1 through 9 of the facilities agenda for approval and respectfully seek a second.
Second. Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Yes, Madam Secretary. President, there are 28 items under management operations for approval. Item one amends board action on past management operations reports. Items two and three and seven are the transfer of staff. Item four is the appointment of staff. Item five approves leave of absences. Item six compensates staff for unused vacation days and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Item eight approves staff for management and distribution of fashion library materials. Items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 21, 23, 24, and 25 are the appointment of staff. Item 15 approves staff to facilitate pre-k and kindergarten open house parent nights. Item 20 appoints voluntary coaches for the winter season. Item 22 authorizes a teacher at McManus School, Middle School, to teach an extra period at the per diem hourly rates. Item 26 appoints volunteer instructor for the after-school aftercare program. Item 27 appoint substitutes. Item 28 accepts the retirement of a staff member.
I do, thank you, Mr. Colvis. I've known Joanne Sura for many years. I had the opportunity to teach her her son Matthew when he was in high school, and Joanne... I was actually very surprised that nobody else was, but I'm usually blessed enough that she's retired. She's worked for the Linden Board of Education for 25 years. She started in 1992 as secretary of the Business Department, and she's retiring. So I want to wish Joanne all the best in her retirement. She will be sorely missed. I read that. Thank you. Madam President, I move Matt to the operation items one through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Thank you, Madam President. I move Matt to the operation items one through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Thank you, Madam President. I move Matt to the operation items one through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Thank you, Madam President. There are 28 items under management operations for approval. Item one amends board action on past management operations reports. Items two and three and seven are the transfer of staff. Item four is the appointment of staff. Item five approves leave of absences. Item six compensates staff for unused vacation days and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Item eight approves staff for management and distribution of fashion library materials. Items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 21, 23, 24, and 25 are the appointment of staff. Item 15 approves staff to facilitate pre-k and kindergarten open house parent nights. Item 20 appoints voluntary coaches for the winter season. Item 22 authorizes a teacher at McManus School, Middle School, to teach an extra period at the per diem hourly rates. Item 26 appoints volunteer instructor for the after-school aftercare program. Item 27 appoint substitutes. Item 28 accepts the retirement of a staff member.
I do, thank you, Mr. Colvis. I've known Joanne Sura for many years. I had the opportunity to teach her her son Matthew when he was in high school, and Joanne... I was actually very surprised that nobody else was, but I'm usually blessed enough that she's retired. She's worked for the Linden Board of Education for 25 years. She started in 1992 as secretary of the Business Department, and she's retiring. So I want to wish Joanne all the best in her retirement. She will be sorely missed. I read that. Thank you. Madam President, I move Matt to the operation items one through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Thank you, Madam President. I move Matt to the operation items one through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Thank you, Madam President. I move Matt to the operation items one through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Thank you, Madam President. There are 28 items under management operations for approval. Item one amends action of past support operations facilities from August of item one and from September, item three. Item 2 through 9 authorizes use of facilities in those charges requested by S. Simon's Benefits Coordinator, Confidential Secretary, and the Business Office. Pete Franklin, Principal of McManus Middle School. Olivia Slater, Director of Strategic Initiatives and Program Services, Someone's Daughter, Inc. Dee Figaro, Troop Leader, Brown and Troop 42010. Dawn Bemian, the High School Band Parents Association. E. Kushner, Sports Supervisor, City of Linden Department of Public Property and Community Services. Rita Greco, Linden Cultural Heritage Committee, and the Mississippi Division Players, W. Adams, Muncie District, Executive Boy Scouts of America. Madam President, if there are no questions or further discussion, I move items 1 through 17 of the finance agenda and 1 through 9 of the facilities agenda for approval and respectfully seek a second.
Second. Discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hiddins?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Tapalas?
Thank you, Madam President. There are 28 items under management operations for approval. Item one amends board action on past management operations reports. Item two and three and seven are the transfer of staff. Item four is the appointment of staff. Item five approves leave of absences. Item six compensates staff for unused vacation days and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Item eight approves staff for management and distribution of fashion library materials. Items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 21, 23, 24, and 25 are the appointment of staff. Item 15 approves staff to facilitate pre-k and kindergarten open house parent nights. Item 20 appoints voluntary coaches for the winter season. Item 22 authorizes a teacher at McManus School, Middle School, to teach an extra period at the per diem hourly rates. Item 26 appoints volunteer instructor for the after-school aftercare program. Item 27 appoint substitutes. Item 28 accepts the retirement of a staff member.
I do, thank you, Mr. Colvis. I've known Joanne Sura for many years. I had the opportunity to teach her her son Matthew when he was in high school, and Joanne... I was actually very surprised that nobody else was, but I'm usually blessed enough that she's retired.
There are twenty-six items under curriculum instruction for approval. Items one through eight deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payments for related services as per child study team evaluations, the approval of one-to-one parent professionals, the approval of transportation, and the approval of bilingual evaluators for related services. Item nine approves home instruction services provided by outside agencies. Item ten approves the team sports schedules for the winter 2016-2017 season. Item eleven, amend board action on past CNI reports. Items twelve and thirteen grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item fourteen, approve district field trips. Items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen approve training for district staff. Item eighteen approves professional development activities. Item nineteen approve the 2016-2017 annual tuition for students attending programs at the Union County Vocational Technical School. Item twenty grant permission for student groups to participate in the City Hall tree lighting ceremony. Item twenty-one accepts the superintendent's report on all acts of violence and vandalism in the Linden Public Schools for the 2015-2016 school year. Item twenty-two approve the submission of the NJAC Q-SAC statement of assurance and the district performance review for the 2016-2017 school year. Item twenty-three grants approval to submit the NCLB Title I comparability report. Item twenty-four approves the cost of refreshments for district Title I parent meetings. Item twenty-five proclaims the week of November fourteenth through the eighteenth as American Education Week to be celebrated in the Linden Public Schools. Item twenty-six approves the superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as discussed at the September twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting. Madam President, I move curriculum instruction items one through twenty-six and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
Yes.
Management operations, Mr. Colvis.
Yes, Madam Secretary. President, uh, there are twenty-eight items under management operations for approval. Item one, amends board action on past management and operations reports. Items two, and three, and seven are the transfer of staff. Item four is the appointment of staff. Item five approves leave of absences. Item six compensate staff for unused vacation days and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Item eight approve staff management and distribution of fashion by our materials. Items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five are the appointment of staff. Item fifteen approve staff to facilitate pre-k and kindergarten open house parent nights. Items... item twenty appoints voluntary coaches for the winter season. Item twenty-two authorizes a teacher at Adman School, uh, middle school to teach an extra period at the per diem hour rates. Item twenty-six appoints a volunteer instructor for the after-school aftercare program. Item twenty-seven appoint substitutes. Item twenty-eight, uh, accepts the retirement of a staff member.
I do, thank you, Mr. Colvis. I've known Joanne Sur for many years. I had the opportunity to teach her son Matthew, uh, when he was in high school. And Joanne, uh, I was actually very surprised that nobody else was, but I'm usually the last to know, that she's retired. Uh, she's worked for the Linden Board of Education for twenty-five years. Uh, she started, uh, in nineteen ninety-two as secretary of the business department, and she's retired. So, I want to wish Joanne all the best in her retirement. She will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Madam President, I move Matt into operation items one through twenty-eight and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes to all, and I abstain from number six, Francine Tagaro, and number twenty-one, Gia Nicole Minutza.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappalas?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Suda. Sorry.
That's okay. Support operations, Mr. Tappalaski.
Thank you, Madam President. So, the support operations committee on recommendation of superintendent schools and business administrator board secretary prevent the following seventeen finance motions and nine facilities motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items one through six are regular board business dealing with the acceptance of the business administrator, board secretary certification as of September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. No major account or fund has been overspending. Board secretary's report for the month of September, authorizations for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for October, two thousand and sixteen, to draw warrants in the amount specified in favor of person's name, and a list of transfers and adjustments for the month of September, two thousand and sixteen. Item seven, judiciary report for the month of September. Uh, item eight is to amend actions on tax agenda from August, item nine. Item nine is to accept funds in the amount of five thousand dollars from Phil sixty-six, Bayway Employee Good Neighbor Fund for the purchase of educational materials and or supplies for Oral Elementary Schools and Solomac Manus Middle Schools. Item ten is to accept funds in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents from the New Jersey School Insurance Group, Mount Oral in connection with schooldude.com Inc., Pittsburgh, PA, representing a fifty percent reimbursement of our two thousand and sixteen-seventeen school dude renewal for achieving a school dude rating of two or above. Item eleven, board dues. Item eleven is to approve contract with Dickerson Corporation Bay Shore for electrostatic paint and locker repair for school tent amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars based on what we see on September fourteenth, and to accept a donation from School Tent PTA in amount of eight thousand dollars for the project. Item twelve. Linden High School teen, no authorizes Linden High School swim team to utilize the swimming pool and other appropriate facilities from November fourteenth through February third, two thousand and seventeen, Monday through Friday from three P.M. to four P.M. at a contract rate of four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
Really fits with the Roway YMCA?
With the Roway YMCA. Uh, item thirteen is to approve contract with Appraisal Associates, Inc. in Cranford, in the amount not to exceed three thousand dollars for appraising the value of property located at twenty... uh, two-twenty through two-twenty-eight, Alma Street, Linden, New Jersey, for the purpose of constructing a parking lot for Sol Middle School. Item fourteen is to approve the enrollment of a fall student for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year eligible on a tuition basis under policy fifty-one eighteen. Item fifteen, in accordance with NJAC six A colon two-six A dash three dot two, to approve the following resolution for submission of the comprehensive maintenance plan and annual maintenance budget amounts, uh, worksheet M one. Item sixteen is to approve the resolution that the Linden Board of Education does not require charges for meals. Linden Board of Education resolves that it does not require YCS, PSSD, to charge students for reducing and/or paid meals. This resolution shall take effect immediately. All prior resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such inconsistency. Item seventeen is to declare the following as surplus equipment, obviously, or unusable, to be disposed of in accordance with district policy two sixty. The facilities report, item one is to amend action of past support operations facilities from August, uh, of item one, and from September, uh, item three. Item two through nine authorizes use of those charges requested by, uh, S. Simons, benefits coordinator, confidential secretary in the business office. Pete Franklin, uh, principal of McManus Middle School. Willie Slater, director of strategic initiatives and program services, Someone's Daughter, Inc. Dee Figaro, troop leader, Brown and Troop Forty-two O ten. Dawn Baviano, the High School Band Parents Association. E. Kushner, sports supervisor, City of Linden Department, public property and community services, uh, Reed and Greco, Linden Cultural Heritage Committee, and the Mississippi Division Players W. Adams, Muncie District, Executive Boy Scouts of America. Madam President, if there are no questions or further discussion, I move items one through seventeen of the finance agenda and one through nine of the facilities agenda for approval and respectfully seek a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes, on all except I abstain from number one.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappalaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
Yes.
Planning and policies?
Thank you. The planning and policy committee submits policies for the first and second readings to incorporate new features required by the vote in law and to elaborate on local district policies. For a second reading, two-two-two for nondiscrimination affirmative action, added a section titled Comprehensive Equity Plan and expanded section titled School and Classroom Practices. Four-one-one-one dot one, four-two-one-one dot one, nondiscrimination affirmative action. Edited first three sections to include assignment, transfer, and promotion. Added three sections, affirmative action officer and team, employment and contract practices. Expanded content under section, so sexual harassment and revised whistleblower protection. Four-one-one-three and four-two-one-three, assignment transfer. Added the last sentence regarding nondiscrimination. Four-one-three-one and four-one-three-one dot one, staff development, in-service education, visitations, conferences. Policy was overballed throughout to make it more consistent with NJAC six A colon nine C. Five-one-four-five dot four, equal educational opportunity. Edited the fourth paragraph in the section harassment to include a sentence on victims. Revised and expanded the section equity in school to include more content on equity programs. Revised section on bias-related incidents to be more consistent with current law. Six-one-two-one, nondiscrimination affirmative action. Updated all the bullet lists to be more consistent with current NJDOE administrative code and added a section on appeals. Six-one-four-two dot two, English as a second language final programs. Policy was overballed to be more consistent with NJAC six A colon fifteen. Six-one-four-two point one-two, career and technical education. Policy overballed throughout to make it more consistent with NJAC six A colon nineteen. Six-one-four-six point two, promotion and retention. The bullets were revised and content added regarding services to English language learners. Six-one-four-seven, standards of proficiency. Added paragraphs four through seven regarding state assessment program, English language learners and classified students. Six-one-six-four point two, guidance services. Added paragraph two regarding equitable access to guidance services. Six-one-seven-one point one, remedial instruction. Added paragraph four regarding parent notification and other minor changes. Six-one-seven-one point two, gifted and talented. Last sentence was added regarding minority and female student represent... representation. Six-one-seven-two, alternative education programs. Added content in first section regarding determination to place a student in an alternative education program. Madam President, I move planning and policies, item one, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappalaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
Yes.
Reports of the special committees and the delegates, state delegate, Mr. Tappalaski.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. As, uh, Dr. Arbutozzi mentioned, next week is the, uh, New Jersey School Board's, uh, workshop in, in Atlantic City. All the board members who are attending should, uh, be, uh, be aware that an email will send to you regarding your registration. We will be registering different than we have in the past. So, either print out that email, it has a barcode on it, or have that email available on, uh, a device like a cellphone or something like that. And there's a special place we go, uh, where we will register and it'll print it out. Other than that, uh, you know, workshop is always a great, uh, experience. A lot of training, uh, make sure you go online and, uh, check all the different programs that are available to you, uh, so that you can set up a schedule. Additionally, on Monday at four o'clock, I was involved as, and part of the, uh, legislative subcommittee which dealt with, um, policies of the New Jersey School Board. We have some policy, uh, one policy that was submitted, uh, which will be brought up at the December delegate assembly in Trenton. Other than that, that concludes my report.
Mr. Tappalaski. Um, there's no carry delegate reports?
No, other than...
Meeting until November?
November, right. Meeting is November twenty-first, which is a Monday. Uh, and it is, it feels especially...
Okay. Um, educational services, Mr. Waller?
There's no party this time.
Um, yes to the parents.
Okay. Uh, our parent EST night was Thursday, October sixth. We had it over at the administration building. In attendance was, uh, Dawn Baviano, Willie Slater, and myself. We had, um, moms and dads come. We had representation from school one, school four, school nine, school ten, McManus, Solmacanus High School. And... The parents wanted to thank you, Dr. Arbutozzi, for the wonderful job you did with the shelter in place. They said the information was out there and they were all very well informed. They felt that their children were all very safe. Um, they said there were some blips over the summer with communication, but they said it seems to have improved greatly. We had some concerns about the middle school cheerleading and, um, the girls walking from the field to the field house, um, especially with, uh, some of the boring attempts. So, uh, they wanted us to check in with you and Mr. Baviano, the safety issues are bad. Uh, we also had some uniform issues, uh, with the girls cheerleading. We had some parents with concerns about the soccer field behind McManus. Uh, they wanted to know who was responsible for maintaining it and, um, they feel the field is atrocious. They said that there's huge holes and rocks and it's ve... um, very dangerous for the kids to be playing on that field. So, uh, they want to know if there's any way we can, um, get in touch with whoever is responsible for maintaining it so that we can get some work done over there for the children. There were some concerns about the, um, TVs that are going to be added to the long terms. Uh, but we will be answering their questions, um, at the meeting so we can get some answers on that. Uh, there were also some questions about how, uh, some of the money was spent for sports and how it was allocated. One of the other issues, actually during our, uh, shel... uh, wasn't our shelter replaced? It was when we had, um, the threat to the school. Uh, the gymnasium doors were left unlocked early that morning. However, um, just to let some of the parents know right now that that situation was taken care of immediately that morning. So, uh, those doors will no longer be left unlocked. They're asking if at all you get any updates on that gun threat? If you could possibly update them, they would like to hear. They also said that, um, one of some positive things that they talked about, they said the children were very happy at McManus Middle School and the principal is just on it. They're very pleased with what's going on in the school and they're very happy right now. So, that was definitely a plus. Uh, they said LHS looks very nice. They love the art displays throughout the building. We had some concerns about the lunch. Uh, we did meet with Pomtonian, so we are working on that. And, um, let's see. One of the other questions was, why do we not film and not publicize the public comments at our meetings? So, um, those were some of their comments, some of their concerns, and, uh, we will be reporting our findings and answers to the parents at our next parent EST meeting, which will be Wednesday, November second, at six-thirty at the administration building. So, we'd love everyone to come out and participate and, um, sit and have a chat with us. That concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burge. EST for students?
EST for students. So, you get to hear me again. Uh, we sat down with the student EST, uh, yesterday, October sixteenth. Uh, Mr. Fekidi and Mrs. Lewis were the advisors in attendance. Mr. Waller and myself also attended the meeting. We had twelve students attend. We had five freshmen, three sophomores, and four seniors. And they, some of the wonderful things that they talked about, we started off the meeting with, uh, some positive things. They loved the homecoming dance. The students felt it was a success and they want to do it again. They said the whole school came together and felt it was a bonding experience. And they said that they were very happy. At first, they were a little leery on opening up to all of the grades, but they said once they got there, they were able to talk to other students that they probably would have never talked to, and they wound up creating friendships. So, they were very happy that it was opened up to all of the grades. Uh, they said the gyms transformed and it looked totally different. Uh, they said that the decorations were awesome. And they're hoping that next year, once the word spreads on how it was an awesome experience, that hopefully more students will participate, and I think they probably will. Um, one of the things they had a tough time with was that it was on a weeknight. So, they were asking if we could possibly make it a Friday or possibly a Saturday for them next year. Uh, they also talked about the pep rally and, um, they said they loved the idea of having one and they had a great time. But they said that they wanted to see if they could do another pep rally in the spring to recognize the teams from the fall and the spring. They also, um, are talking about having a powder puff game and a bonfire right after the powder puff game. So, that's some of the things that we... in, it's in the works. Hopefully, maybe this year, I don't know how far along they are with it, but they're trying. They talked about some of the activities that are going to be going on. They took pasta dinner for the daughter T.C.'s, September twenty-first, at the Florio Center. They talked about the Saturday movie night, um, that's October twenty-seventh. They talked about the pancake breakfast for the girls volleyball. Uh, we also talked about the lunches and some of the, um, concerns with the lunches. So, we're going to try to set up a meeting with Pom... with Pomtonian to have them come and speak with the children. Um, and they also have a lot of IT issues. And we are, we have invited Mr. Waller to come and speak with the children on November seventeenth to help them with some of the IT issues also. And it's always a pleasure to sit with students and hear their thoughts about what's going on in the district. Our next meeting, again, is Thursday, November seventeenth. That concludes my report, Madam and Mrs. Burge.
Do we have any unfinished business before the board? Or do you have a comment? I need to say.
Sorry, couldn't see it from me again. It's going to be a little long-winded, but... Um, I'm so very proud of our district and all that's occurring at every school. I was able, I was able to attend several back-to-school nights. Unfortunately, I couldn't get out to all, but it was great to see what was happening in some of the classrooms as well as the parent, students, and staff. I'm extremely proud of all of our homecoming events as well as the pep rally. It has been said that these events were impossible to pull off and that the students would not be able to handle it. Well, not only were the events pulled off, but they were pulled off with amazing success and our students proved that they had tired of pride. We did not have one incident occur and I'm very proud of all of them. There's a little write-up that, um, I was given this week and I'd like to share it with you. For the first time in decades, on Thursday, October thirteenth, LHS held a homecoming dance. This event was truly a success. There were a hundred and fifty students in attendance and as a result of the fundraiser, the students were able to raise over two thousand dollars. Staff and volunteers, volunteers transformed the LHS gym into a beautiful diner room with tables and center pieces and luminary lanterns. A DJ played music that kept the students on their feet the entire night. All administration were in attendance greeting student, greeting students on the red carpet, coming in and celebrating with them. It was truly a success and it was because of the collaboration of the phenomenal students, staff, and administration at LHS. Um, I also attended the, uh, pep rally. It was, um, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead myself. I attended the event, the homecoming dance, and it was spectacular. The gymnasium was breathtaking. And that was because all of the teachers and staff, they volunteered, volunteered their own time and their own money to transform that gym. They bought all its decorations, they decorated the gymnasium, and they shouted on the ju... the dance all on their own. So, kudos to that because that was, it was amazing. Uh, also with the pep rally, the students, every student from LHS walked from Linden High School to Tiger Stadium and back to experience the pep rally. The time, the energy, the love and commitment that was put into the pep rally is also priceless. All of our lost sports were showcased as well. They had balloons, banners, music, and of course, our tiger mascot was keeping everyone entertained. The dedication, commitment, and love that was poured into these events created priceless memories for all. We do so many great things in our district and I can't wait to see the amaz... the more amazing things that happen. This concludes my report, Madam and Mrs. Burge.
Anyone else? I do want to, uh, add, um, the early childhood, um, group, Miss Fazio and her team held a, uh, early childhood meeting for the pre-k and the kindergarten parents to expose them to how their children would be learning how to play some of the math games and some of the reading games. And, um, at the end of the game, at, at, at the end of the evening, after you hit all of their stations, you got a frisbee if you completed all their, their various games. But I have to tell you, it was a great night and it was, it was great to show the parents how their children were learning. And I'm, I'm a fan of tools for the mind because it does give them a good start. So, I would like to congratulate them as well for a successful back-to-school for early childhood. And I also want to say one other thing. Throughout the many years that I have been sitting here on the board, I can tell you, not only does Linden High School have an awesome staff that cares about our students, and it's all throughout our district. You can go into any building and you'll find teachers and staff that are there for their children, for our children, for our students, for children that don't have anything to give them a holiday. So, I'm proud of this district. I'm proud of our teachers and our staff. And I want to, you know, let you all know that not only does Linden High School have an awesome staff, our whole district has an awesome staff.